All right, good evening, excuse me, good evening, everyone. I would like to thank all in attendance to our Folsom-Cordova Unified School District Board Candidate Forum. As you know, this is a very important school board election. This is the first time since 2010 that it has gone to ballot and our community will be voting. The last three elections went uncontested. Since two current board members are not seeking reelection, we will have at least two new board members. I would like to thank, in particular, our sponsors, the Folsom-Cordova Education Foundation, the Folsom Telegraph, the Rancho Cordova Grapevine, Soundboard Marketing and Communication, and of course, Folsom TV. Now let's welcome and introduce our candidates. To my left is Jaya Badiga, on down the line, Josh Hoover, Dave Reed, and Ed Short. To start our event, candidates will be allowed a two-minute opening statement, and we're going to begin with Jaya.
Great, thank you so much. Well, thank you so much to FCEF, the Educational Foundation, the Telegraph, the Grapevine, Soundboard, and Folsom TV. Before I tell you a little bit about myself, I wanted to tell you about what my priorities are, and I hope that that order will resonate with you, because I think it's important that you know what each of us here stand for, right? So, don't learn spelling from me, for the kids who are here, but I want to use the acronym AAT, A-A-T, to describe to you what my priorities are. And A, the first A is for action, and by that I mean to talk to you about implementing what I consider to be the most significant need in our district, which is socio-emotional learning, or increasing the emotional quotient in our kids. And this, I believe, that we can do by increasing opportunities for group play, increasing counselors and access to counseling for our kids, providing programs that allow for coping mechanisms, that allow for behaviors that we consider to be outside what's expected to be addressed, and other such activities that help kids integrate better in our society. Accountability, because at the end of the day, all of us on the board, all of our stakeholders, we're accountable to you, right, and to our students. I have 30 seconds left, it looks like, so let me tell you a little bit about myself. I've been in the district for about, for more than 15 years. I have two children who are here, and quiet for now. And I wear many hats, so I'm hoping to bring some of this diverse experience to the board as, you know, an elected member, based on your decisions. Thank you.
Josh?
Hello, everyone, welcome. Thank you to our sponsors tonight, and special thanks to Folsom TV for getting this out to the folks that couldn't be here tonight. My name is Joshua Hoover. Obviously, I'm a candidate for Folsom-Cordova School Board. My wife and I have a first and a fourth grader at Russell Ranch Elementary, and I've got a preschooler that is itching to join them next year. I'm also a member of my local PTA, and I serve on the Folsom-Cordova Special Education Community Advisory Committee, it's kind of a mouthful. Professionally, I serve as the Policy Director for State Assemblyman Kevin Kylie, who is the representative for the City of Folsom, and also the Vice Chair of the Education Committee in the Assembly. I advise him on education issues, and I've had the opportunity over the last decade to work on a lot of different policies that help expand access to technology in the classroom and ensure that every child in the state gets the opportunity to receive a quality education. A few things about my priorities. Number one, I'm running to be a voice for parents and students in the district. All of my decision-making will be based, first and foremost, on that. And the three ways that I want to try to do that is, number one, ensuring that we're preparing our kids for the 21st century, for success in their future. And that includes expanding career technical education opportunities and STEM opportunities throughout the entire district. Number two, similar to Jaya, I would like to strengthen district transparency and accountability. I think that the board has to be an accountability mechanism, and I also would love to see our board meetings livestreamed, much like we're doing tonight. So that will be something that I pushed for from the beginning, to livestream and make these board meetings here in Folsom-Cordova accessible to all the public. And finally, I'm committed to improving inclusion and school climate. I am the father of a son on the autism spectrum, and I look forward to getting more into these priorities as we move throughout the night.
All right, David?
Hi, my name is Dave Reed, and I'm a candidate for Folsom-Cordova School Board. So let me start off with the obvious question, why am I running for school board? Well, my wife Karen and I are the proud parents of three children in Folsom-Cordova schools, Jackson, who's in ninth grade, Connor, who's in seventh grade, and Logan, who's in fifth grade. But obviously, it's much more than just simply my kids, it's about all of our kids. It's about all 20,670-plus students that we have in our school district. All parents care about their kids' education and their future. In the end, our children are our future, they're the future of our nation, they're the future of our state, our community, and our families, for that matter. And while this is a great school district, even great school districts can be better. We should always strive to do better. So what about my background makes me qualified? Well, I have over 23 years in education policy experience. Real law school, I was counsel to the New York State Legislature Education Committees. I negotiated state budgets on K-12, as well as drafted legislation. After that, I became Deputy General Counsel at the New York State High Education Services Corporation, and then in 2006, we moved to California where I became General Counsel at Ed Fund in Rancho Cordova. For the past 10 years, I've been focusing a lot on volunteerism within the community. I'm currently President of the Folsom-Cordova PTA Council. I was a founding board member of the Folsom-Cordova Education Foundation. I'm on the Measure G Bond Oversight Committee. I've been attending school board meetings for the last three years. Right now, it's about 90-plus hours I've attended school board meetings, and then also started my volunteer experience on the San Jacinto PTA Executive Board. I look forward to tonight's dialogue. Thank you.
Ed?
Good evening, my name's Ed Short. I want to thank the sponsors. Well, reelect me, Ed Short, because first, I grew up in a family of educators. Both my parents were teachers, and my sister was a speech therapist. For me, public education was a way of life when I was growing up. I'm an experienced board member for 16 years, reelected four times with the Masters in School Governance, a professional engineer, and was involved in the Rancho Cordova City Hooding Corporation. I am a congressionally recognized Vice Mayor of the Cordova Community Council, have served on the Board of Directors for Rancho Chamber Commerce. I was involved in the bond measures M, M, and B, but more importantly, served as the President of the Board twice, as well as other positions on the board. Furthermore, I served as a CSBA Delegate Assembly for many years. I have two youngsters that graduated from our schools, who inspire me to give back to the community. So I'm committed to helping provide the best possible school facilities, staffed by highly qualified teachers, and support staff which result in the best possible educational opportunity for all students. I believe we must invest more, ensure that today's educational programs are in tune with tomorrow's world and global economy, and work harder to create safer schools. Second, on educational issues, I currently support proposed reforms to improve instructional programs in our high schools that emphasize rigor, relevance, and relations to reduce the achievement gap, increase graduation rates, improve access to post-secondary education, empower all students to become actuses who successfully go into a higher education and professions. I don't pretend to know all the answers or solutions to all our problems, but I do believe that together we can build a collaborative team dedicated to finding the answers and solutions we need. So reelect me, and I promise to be the answer of questions, a seeker of solutions, and dedicated to providing the best possible education that truly will prepare our kids for tomorrow's world. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to start with the questions now. Each candidate will be allowed two minutes to respond to the question. We're going to start with Jaya, and then as we go down, each question, each new question, we're going to go to the next to start a new round of questioning. So the first question is, what is your vision for education in our community?
So I believe that there is no one-size-fits-all, right? We have the cities of Folsom and most of Rancho Cordova in our district, which, if you look at the breadth of schools and students, incorporates a tremendous amount of diversity, not only of students in terms of their backgrounds and culture, but also in terms of the learning needs and requirements that we have. We have high-achieving students, we have students where, in a recent study by the Sacramento Public Library, where they tabulated some results, found that some schools, the percentages of those that do not meet grade level for reading was higher than some of the schools in our area. So we have those students that need, you know, a little bit of extra attention and maybe rigor, and so we need to create and also account for these differences in our student bodies. We need to create programs that are sustainable, because there's no point in creating something when we have money one year and we don't have money another year. And then additionally, I think we also need to account for limited resources. Unfortunately, we're just now catching up to funding that used to be at pre-recession levels in 2007, 2008, and we're almost 10 years behind, right? And if you look at special ed, that's almost 18 years behind. So if you look at the different challenges that we face, if you look at the needs of our student body, I think we have to be creative, we have to be responsive, and react pretty quickly to the needs of our community, and we need to make sure that the fantastic staff that we have, both certified and classified, keep up and have abilities to keep up their professional development, invest in our teachers, and help our students. Thank you.
Josh?
So, I believe that, and just kind of going to expand on a little bit of what I said in the opening statement, but I think one of the things that really struck me when I started getting more involved and ultimately decided to run for the board was the significant achievement gap that we see, that exists between Rancho Cordova and the City of Folsom. I think that, you know, my vision for education in our community is that we would close that achievement gap, and obviously, that is easier said than done. There are a number of challenges that exist that we need to tackle as a board and as a community to do that, but to me, that is the greatest challenge and need facing our district. You know, my kids have the opportunity to go to an elementary school that where over 90% of the kids are meeting or exceeding standards. There are elementary schools in Rancho Cordova that are almost 90% in the opposite direction, where they're below standards. And obviously, tests do not measure every aspect of the classroom, but it is something that shows that there is a big need to bring equity and to close that achievement gap. Similarly, our, you know, Folsom and Vista High School students enjoy SAT scores that are 300 points higher than our Cordova High School students. I think those are things that we really, as a board, have to, and as a community, have to come together on and really tackle, and it's going to be difficult, it's going to require, it's going to require us to make sure we are spending our budget where the resources actually need to go, and it's going to require working collaboratively with teachers and with community members and with administrators to actually affect positive change.
All right, David?
Thank you. Well, actually, I share a lot of similar comments to Jaya and Josh. I guess I would start off by saying, you know, we are a very large school district, very diverse school district. Even within the both cities, there's a great deal of diversity. So both ethnic, cultural, language skills, and so, you know, clearly, there isn't a one-size-fits-all solution. So I do think that, to a certain degree, we have a little bit of a tale of two cities here, where, and I think we need to spend more time and effort in helping improve the achievement gap, especially in Rancho Cordova. But I also feel that, you know, we need to provide more opportunities. I mean, we've been basically 20 years now on a national policy of this mentality that everybody needs to go to college, and the fact of the matter is not everybody needs to go to college, not everybody should go to college. But it started in the Clinton administration, was picked up by the Bush administration, then the Obama administration, and we've essentially stigmatized our professions, and we've taken the trades out of the schools. We need to bring the trades back into the schools, back into the high schools. If we don't provide other opportunities, other career paths, other than college, we're failing our kids, we're failing our society, we're failing our nation. And so, you know, when you look at the average age of the trade professions, in the mid-40s, some in the high 40s, and a great amount of retirement, we need to find ways to bring them back. And these are good-paying jobs, high-paying jobs, but it all comes down to, what are we teaching in high school? We're teaching one career path, essentially, college. So I'd like to create more opportunities, not only for those students that want to go to college, but also for those students who don't see college as the avenue they want to pursue. So with great diversity, you need to focus on multiple solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of the things that folks are saying here tonight, but as for the last 16 years, we've been through some really hard times economically in the state. The state is starting to come back, the local funding sources, it's called the LCFF. We, as a vision for this community, part of the LCAP, which is part of the LCF program, we go out to constituents and we ask what the vision should be for the community, and those stakeholder meetings give us a lot of direction of where we need to go, and if you go to our website for the LCAP goals and visions, it kind of outlines in alignment with the LCAP provisions. But for my vision to align with all that, there's a lot of things we can do here locally with our, yes, we do have two communities that are different. Yes, we have kids in the areas in the Rancho Cordova area, I have lower-performing schools that we can focus on and help in those areas where the school sites need to be, have the appropriate resources. With that said, the English learners that we have in the Rancho Cordova, it's a large percentage, a lot of folks, I understand, it's like 70% is the English learning language. We have a huge amount of English learners that we need to focus on, more programs for the English learners. On the special education side, we've always had that issue of unfounded mandates from the federal and state levels. Our SLPA, which is a special education program that we did bring here back in the years, we also need to improve that program always, we're always doing better on that program, but that is very important to help our special education programs, because that is vital for all kids to be successful. With that said, the achievement gap and all the other things we're talking is all tied into that, but the vision needs to be always aligned to the classroom, the achievement, and doing the best we can with the resources we have, and maintaining what's good for the classroom, what's good for the kids, and that's really protecting that classroom and doing everything we can to help the teachers, to give them the tools to provide the best education possible for those kids in the classroom.
Thank you. Next question, what do you believe are the leadership responsibilities of school board members? What specific strengths would you bring to the board table? We're going to start with Joshua.
So, first and foremost, I mentioned it a little bit earlier, but I think that the main responsibility of the board is to listen to the needs of the community and to act as an accountability mechanism for the district's operations. We have a fantastic new superintendent, Dr. Collegian, and we have some amazing district staff that are doing very good work on behalf of our students. But Jaya actually mentioned this earlier, we are the, the school board is the only, are the only leaders in the district that are directly accountable to the voters, to the community. So I think it's very important that we, because that puts us in a unique position to be advocates for parents and students when problems arise. And so that, I think, should be the number-one responsibility of the board. It also means that it's very important that who we elect to our school board to act as that accountability mechanism is actively engaged in the process. So it's going to be very important that we elect board members that are willing to do their research, come to the meetings prepared, ask questions, have a dialogue with district staff. It doesn't always mean that there's going to, you know, there's not always a big problem that could be identified, but there are a lot of little things, and I think a conversation, rather than just a rubber stamp, is going to be a way to work those things out and create the best policy possible. And finally, I also believe it's very important that each board member has their own policy agenda, the own passions that they care about, that they are willing to push. For me, that, as I mentioned earlier, that includes increasing transparency and accountability, and it also means improving inclusion among a number of other priorities. I'm running out of time on this question, but in terms of strengths, I think that, you know, my experience at the state level in education policy and my day-to-day, I kind of live and breathe education, and I'm in it every day. I also have three little ones in the classroom that come back and report to me every day, so I definitely believe that as a parent and in my professional career, it's prepared me well for this, to be a board member.
Thank you, Joshua. David?
Well, the role of the school board is one of a policy. It's not to run the school district, and I think sometimes people get confused by that. The superintendent is the chief administrator of the school district, she's the one, or he, in this case, she, is the one that runs the day-to-day operations of the school district. The three major responsibilities of a school board is development of the budget, policy initiatives, and then hiring and supervising, if you will, the superintendent, who runs the school district. And, you know, part of the things that I've observed over the last three years attending school board meetings is, that has troubled me to a certain degree, is the level of items that are approved on the consent agenda. It takes a board member to pull something off of the consent agenda to have a dialogue about it. And I guess I'm naturally inquisitive, I like to ask questions, and that's actually falls in perfectly with the role of the school board, in that one of the fiduciary responsibilities of a school board member is to ask the difficult questions of staff. It's not to suggest that you don't believe staff, or don't think that they're providing you the best answer, but the role of the school board is to ask those difficult questions, and I'm prepared to ask those difficult questions. If elected, my fellow board members might not appreciate maybe the longer meetings, but I think it's important for those questions to be asked. Recently, there were five or six policies that were amended, I think it was about a month and a half ago, and not a single one of those policies was pulled off the consent calendar to ask questions, you know, of staff, you know, why did you make these edits? Well, how come, did you consider this, did you consider that? And in the end, we probably would go exactly where the recommendations of the staff, but that's not the role of the school board. The school board has to ask the difficult questions, and I look forward to asking those questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Ed?
The role of the school board, of course, citizen oversight is cornerstone to democracy in the United States. So what we are as a board member, as elected public officials, that really entrusts, the public entrusts, trustees, to the governing community, public schools, and that's local control. And that is, it's a gift of the public education that we have local control to represent our communities. So the roles, the role really of the board is to ensure the school district responds to the values and the beliefs and priorities of their communities. And why we do that is through five major responsibilities. One is setting direction and policy, like budget and finance, establishing effective and efficient structure. We're always talking about how we can restructure to be more efficient and effective, provide good support, and ensuring accountability throughout the whole system, which is including like the LCAP, LCAP transparency, as we talked about earlier, provide community leadership for, advocacy for children, and the school district and public schools. So we're supposed to be the community leaders out there, championing the children there. So these five responsibilities are the core functions, are so fundamental to the school system, countable to the public, and it's only can be performed by a governing body. And this governing body is a body of a whole, it's not each member individually, we're only one vote. And with that said, we have to work together collaboratively as a governance team together, along with the superintendent, to make the decisions and the operations that best serve our students and community.
Thank you, Ed. Jaya?
Great, thank you so much. I'm going to go back to where's Jaya at with the wrong spelling, right? The AAT, which I introduced myself with in the beginning, so action, accountability, transparency. I believe that these are key ideals that every board leadership should have. And what I wanted to talk to you a little bit more about, to add to not only what my fellow candidates here have talked about, but to talk to you about the collaborative and consensus-building aspect of the board. I do believe that the board has to solicit and also take into account not only differing and contentious points of view, but also to incorporate it into a vision that kind of melds with the policy that we have, that, you know, with our mission, in terms of betterment of the student, in terms of providing the right environment and culture and climate, which the superintendent has talked about in her messages, not only for our staff, students, parents, and community members, right? So I do believe that the board also needs to work actively on this consensus-building part of it. In addition, the strengths that I would bring, if elected to this governing body, would be the ability to talk to the different community groups. For the past four and a half years, I was the managing attorney at WEVE, a nonprofit organization in Sacramento. And what I walked away with over there is not only, you know, taking credit, I'm hoping the management also feels that way at WEVE, but not only taking credit for a great legal program, which grew from a two-member team to about seven members when I left, but also building relationships in the community with various nonprofit groups, with various governmental and quasi-governmental bodies, which I believe is what I can bring to this position as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaya. Next question, we're going to start with Dave. What do you see as the opportunities and challenges in our school district?
Well, I guess I would start by saying, you know, focusing on our strengths. Our strengths include our teachers. I think we have phenomenal teachers in the school district. We need to support the teachers, and, you know, I'd like to see more responsibility placed on, and let me back up by saying, we always refer to our teachers as certificated employees, and I think that's the wrong term. I think we should call them what they are, they're professionals. They have master's degrees, some of them have doctorate degrees. We need to support our teachers. We don't question doctors and the techniques they use to provide health care. We shouldn't be questioning teachers and the techniques they use to educate our students. But also, in our strengths is our academic performance, at least in Folsom, is a strength. Our diversity is a strength of the district, our school facilities, both in Rancho Cordova and Folsom are good facilities, through various measures from both communities have improved the school facilities. Our business community in the Folsom-Rancho Cordova area is a huge asset that I think we have just barely tapped, and then we should do a more, a better opportunity to try to link in with the business community. We have a lot of Fortune 500 companies in this, in the two communities, that we should try to leverage and get some more town gown initiatives adopted, whether it be internships, apprenticeships. Now, as far as challenges, I mean, I will focus strictly onto our achievement gap. That concerns me. I do not like the test scores that I'm seeing in Rancho Cordova. I remember my very first school board meeting I attended in 2008, where the school board was literally celebrating the fact that they increased the statewide test to something like 35% pass rate, and I was appalled that they were celebrating, but they were celebrating because it was like 27% the year before. But honestly, I want to see all of our test scores across the board, up into, you know, 65 or above, that's the goal. So, anyway, those are what I see as the strengths and challenges. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Ed?
Can you repeat the question?
Absolutely. What do you see as the opportunities and challenges in our school district?
Well, the opportunities is that we have sets of vast resources, we have very engaged communities on both sides of the communities, even in Rancho Cordova, we've always had support of all our bond measures and also support of our schools and facilities, and so they're a great opportunity to continue that synergy we have with our communities. We have a lot of engagement with our parents and our communities, and the business, as we said before, are all participating. We have a great district that's had a very good success rate. We do have some challenges on some schools that we need to look at, especially in the Rancho Cordova area, and also in other schools, so we have to look across the board on all those. The challenges we're going to have is growth. Growth is going to be tremendous, not only in the Rancho Cordova areas, but also in the south of 55. If you look at the growth there, it's going to be tremendous, we're going to probably have about, now, 3,000. We're going to probably have about now 3,000, 4,000 kids enrolled in the next five years. So we're going to be challenged with, again, more bond measures and monies in facilities that we need to expand to maintain the facilities, to keep the classrooms at a small size and not do a lot of modular construction. So having a good conducive facilities and learning environments are one of our challenges. We're always have challenges in some sites and our areas that we're overcrowded, and we're always doing things because we're at capacity. So those are huge challenges that we will have to meet in the next growth factors of our next five years, the next two, three, five years. So those are the kind of areas I would, would like to see we focus on and master plans of facilities, and making sure that we continue to provide the best education possible for all our kids in the facilities.
Thank you, Ed. Jaya?
Great, thank you. So in terms of opportunities, you know, I think our district is blessed that we have tremendous support from both city councils, Rancho City Council and Folsom City Council, that both chambers of commerce have supported the district and provide opportunities. So for instance, the pre-acceptorship program was recent, and this is an opportunity where kids can interact directly with employers in the district and, in the community, right? In the local community. And I think that's a fantastic opportunity to provide to more and more high school students to kind of get an understanding of the real world and their place in it. Additionally, I think both cities are growing cities. We're trying to attract, you know, value companies and employers over here, which not only adds to the talent pool, but also adds to our diversity and adds to bringing new programmatic and technical and other skills that we can build on as a district. In terms of challenges, I also see these as opportunities, because they are opportunities to change, or opportunities to, to definitely discuss and get perspective from the community. So safety, that being, you know, a huge challenge. My goal is, and my hope is, and my prayers are, that whoever's on this board for the next four years does not have to deal with a horrific incident of gun violence, right? And, and every day, I'm hoping and praying that, that our, our kids are safe. Another challenge, and of course, that's site-specific, and I think the community should get involved in talking about what we can do with our various schools. Another challenge, I think, is suspension rates, and, and how these disproportionately affect students of, of color, right? How are we going to implement strategies that address this and prevent what I consider a school-to-prison pipeline? Because statistics have shown that those children that are deprived of opportunities to engage and, and perform successfully will eventually end up with lack of opportunities and lack of, of good, stable jobs. So along with that, I have to stop. I'll continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaya. Joshua?
So I'll start with the challenges, because I like to end on a positive note, but I think that, you know, there, there's a number of challenges in it. We can't get it, I couldn't name them all tonight, but, you know, first and foremost, there's always going to be an issue of funding. I think that's going to continue, and that's not going to change. Unfortunately for us, we require on, we rely on the state to provide us with our funding. And researchers suggest that we really need, in order to provide adequate education in California, 22 billion more per year in funding, which is probably not going to happen from the state. That's 32% more than we're spending now. We also have the challenge of, our special needs students are, we have, we, it's so important that we are serving them and integrating them and providing them with opportunities, but the state's only covering 30% of those costs as well, and the district is picking up the rest. And so, you know, those funding challenges, and we haven't even hit a recession yet, right? So those funding challenges are going to continue to be an issue that we, we face as a board. You know, Ed mentioned the growth. We're going to have almost 40 schools over the next, we're going to get up to almost 40 schools over the next 30 years, and that is going to be a logistical challenge. And parental engagement. We have some amazing PTAs in this district, but we also have some schools that don't have, don't have PTAs, and don't have groups with engaged parents, and we need to be able to help those schools and those sites create opportunities and communicate to parents on ways that they can get engaged. In terms of opportunities, we have an amazing Rancho Cordero Promise Program that is helping our kids afford college. I think that is an amazing program that I would love to see continue, and maybe even expand to Folsom students that need help as well. I just had the opportunity to tour Cordero and Folsom High CTE programs. There's some amazing things coming down the pipeline there. And finally, the superintendent and the district's focusing on getting more and more community engagement in LCAP meetings and safety meetings is an amazing opportunity. So I'll, I'll stop there for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Joshua. Next question, we're going to start with Ed. What specific actions will you take to increase the role of parents in decision-making and promote parental involvement in schools?
What, oh, okay. So parental involvement is a diverse question. I mean, we have a program here for parent engagement that puts, we believe that the parents is, the parents is child's first teacher. With that said, that partnership with the family is critical to academic success. There are studies that show that parent engagement in a community is probably the most important thing you can do. To do that, there's a lot of programs we have out there. There's the English Learner Advisory Committee, it's called ELAC. There's the district-level English Learner Advisory Committee. We'd, we'd want to make sure that we're expanding that into available, that we can get more attendance to that, because like I was saying earlier, we have a big English learner community that really can help to close the achievement gap, if we can really focus on English learners. School site councils, of course, and we have PTAs. We probably, like we were saying earlier, PTAs, there's some PTAs that need more involvement. We would need to go out and maybe give, figure out which ones that need to have a little bit more help, and trying to get parents to come to the PTAs. But we do have some cultural issues in some of the areas that we need to attract people to come to that. There's also school-connected organizations and after-school programs. There's a variety of programs we can do, but to do that, we really need to get the parents educated to say, the involvement of their kids, they are the child's first teachers, and the more they're involved in their child's education, the more success they're getting. And we would need to have to get that up, that message out and do that. We can do that through technology. We have a good PIO system here. We really have brought this up to the 21st century in communicating with the public with new technology. So I think we would need to expand that.
Thank you, Ed. Jaya?
Great, thank you. So I think communication is absolutely key, and I know some of my other candidates have talked about, you know, the process where possible, that was Joshua, I think, that said, you know, streaming meetings. But I do believe that we have to provide parents with the start-to-finish process. If they don't know where they fit in their role, or how they can impact decisions, I've seen parents here come in a little bit too late when they came in with their request. Their request is absolutely legitimate, but they didn't know when to make it. And, and to me, that was, that was really upsetting, because as a parent, you really feel powerless when you come in not knowing what the protocol is, what the process is. So I think transparency is key in being able to communicate how we, the board would take decisions on policy, and when parental input is required, or what the deadline is. Another group of parents that I was talking to would love to learn about transitions and how middle school, for instance, the curriculum is so different, schedules are so different, how do parents plan for this? So I'd hate to add to Daniel's workload, but if there's a way to communicate to communities and parents that are transitioning from fifth grade to middle school, from eighth grade to high school, about, okay, here's what to expect in, in your area high school, or here are the decisions you should be making by, you know, September, October, and you'll see the impact of those decisions at this time. I think that understanding would certainly help a lot more parents feel engaged and feel connected. And I think also facts showing people in communities how reading with your kids 30 minutes a day can have such a lifelong impact on their progress. And, and enabling our libraries to, to create programs, either through businesses that can perhaps provide transportation, or pizza, or something that will kind of, you know, make people come to these forums and participate in them, I think is vital. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaya. Joshua?
I think pizza may actually be a really good policy solution. So you can never underestimate the power of an engaged parent, and I, I truly believe that, you know, that, so I, I sit on the Special Education Community Advisory Committee, and we talk about these things a lot. The reason the committee exists is basically to help parents better understand how IEPs work, better understand what their options are, and it's all about empowering parents to make decisions for their child, giving them the information they need. And we always say in the committee, you know, you are your child's biggest advocate. There are a lot of great teachers, there are a lot of great administrators, but at the end of the day, the parent is the child's greatest advocate. And so I think providing, empowering parents to make decisions for their kids is, is extremely powerful. What this requires is communication and, and opportunities. So I think that the district is doing, and I kind of am repeating myself, but they're doing such a fantastic job in the last year, really creating opportunities where parents can come out and actually be a part of the process. I think that's so crucially important. At the district level, we're, we're getting parents and teachers involved at the same table, and administrators at the same table, talking about what our students need. At the, at the site levels, I really am concerned about the PTA issue, and I'm very looking forward to working with my colleagues, if I am elected, to figure out how we can get more parental involvement at the site level. One thing that I, when I started coming to board meetings, one thing that I really was shocked by is that they're not available on television, that they're not, or they are available on television, but they're not available online. And so I would love to see us be able to, like I said earlier, livestream our board meetings. I know most people won't want to watch them, but for those that do, I really do think it's important that we move into the 21st century there and provide for that level of engagement as well.
Thank you, Joshua. David?
Well, one word comes to mind, transparency. We need to create more transparency for the parents to be able to engage. It's not only letting them know of the opportunities to engage, but how do you do that if you're not transparent? And it's not to suggest that there hasn't been, you know, a certain level of transparency, but, you know, I do think 100% that we need video taping of these board meetings. I'm sure I'll stress all the board members out, including me if, if elected, but the bottom line is, you know, the community needs to know what's going on, even if that means that, sorry, Daniel, if you have to stand in the back with your, your iPhone out and doing a FaceTime or something on, on, on Facebook. Because the community that I moved from in, in upstate New York, when Josh said, enter the 21st century, I would argue, enter the 20th century. They were videotaping, livestreaming on cable access their school board meetings in 1998, when I attended the first school board meeting there. So, you know, that'd be my, one of my, my top priorities. But I, you know, I'll tell you, the one message I have for the parents is the school board, from what I can tell, really does care about what you think. And if you have a concern, please show up at a school board meeting and speak during open, open public comment. You know, I think of two instances in the past two years where I saw power in numbers. I saw it in the Indian community, when they came and spoke about the textbook issue. I saw it in the teaching community, when they came to speak about the lack of budget. And I'm telling you, the, the parents have a stronger voice than they would ever imagine. They just need to come and share their concerns with the school board. As for the PTAs, I agree, there's five PTAs in Rancho Cordero that don't, or excuse me, there are five schools in Rancho Cordero that don't have a PTA or a PTO. Every single school in Folsom has a PTA or a PTO, and it's something that the Folsom-Cordero PTA Council is actually working on. We're trying to create a unified PTA for those schools in Rancho Cordero that don't have a PTA. So transparency, I'll just go back to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next question, we're going to start back here with Jaya. And that question is, what role do you see the FCUSD Board playing in the future growth of the district?
Yeah, I think it's an integral part in the growth of the district. From Rancho specifically, I've heard concerns of crowded classrooms in middle school and high school levels. And in Folsom, I've heard concerns about the, the plan for south of 50, and, and how we're going to have enough, not only new schools built, but are we also taking consistent measures to avoid some areas that may, you know, represent polluted or harmful areas for our kids to be on? So I think, you know, it's, we have to be a part of these discussions from the initial stages. We can't be an afterthought, because we do have a responsibility to our community in terms of letting people know about what the plans are, so we can solicit input and provide the right feedback back to the city council and planning commission members to incorporate. I think it's vital that the district is a part of these growth plans, not only for the expansions and for new school buildings, but also to talk about how we can revitalize those schools that may not be performing in a manner that others are, and how the community can kind of step in and take up that role. You know, our, my other candidate, fellow candidates here have talked about budget. That's a frightening reality. What if we do go into a recession? Then we're going to go backwards in time instead of forward, right? So how do we come up with sustaining ideas? Maybe collaborating with the tremendous community resources we have, Folsom Lake College, Sac State University. Maybe they can provide some of the career tech pathways that we've not seen happen. Or, you know, working with parents in our special ed communities especially, because if you ask me who the expert is, I'd always defer to parents, because, you know, they've wrapped their heads around this and are still learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaya. Joshua?
So we've kind of, probably all of us have already mentioned some of the challenges coming down, coming towards us in the future with the growth, not only south of 50, but just in general. You know, we're blessed to live in a region that people want to come to. People want to bring their kids and send them to school. I mean, this is one of the main reasons that my wife and I, when we start, I grew up here, but when my wife and I started having kids, we're like, well, where do we want to live? We really want to live in a community with great schools. And so the, the quote-unquote, I guess, downside of that is that we're going to have a lot of challenges with, with growth, and making sure that we can continue to provide a high-quality education when we have class sizes that are getting bigger, when we have more kids coming into the district. And so I think that as a board, we have to play an integral role in, in making the right decisions for our students. But in addition to that, I also think we need to remember that local control is very, very important. We have to allow our site administrators and our teachers, we have to empower them to make the decisions that are best for their school sites. I, I do not believe that the school board is the experts that are going to be able to solve all the challenges. I think we have to listen to what's coming from our school sites and our, and our district staff, and, and trust in their expertise, and help empower them to make the right decisions, and give them the flexibility to do that. And really, at the end of the day, it's going to be all about collaboration and working together. It's funny, because in today's political climate, you know, there's just so much, so many fights going on, and it seems like it's impossible to actually work with one another, especially when you disagree. But I think as a board, we need to be held to a higher standard and make sure that our priority is to, whether we have disagreements or whether there's challenges, to commit to working with one another and with the community to solve those challenges.
Thank you, Joshua. Dave?
Well, it's an interesting question. The Folsom-Cordero School District's involvement in the future growth of the cities, it really, in the end, isn't a responsibility of the school district. And what I mean by that is it's the responsibility of the city of Rancho Cordero and the city of Folsom. The school board does not control whether a house is built or a company is, a facility is, is built. It's, it's those city governments that do. And there is a, a process in place, two-by-two meetings, that take place, where two members of the city council and two members from the school board meet to discuss issues, both with the city of Folsom and the city of Rancho Cordero. And from what I understand, those meetings are very productive, so I would anticipate, regardless of who gets elected, that those meetings will continue to be productive, and collaboration will continue to take place. I mean, the, the goal for the Rancho Cordero is to be, I'm just kidding, for the Folsom-Cordero School District is to be prepared for the growth. And the best way to be prepared for, for the growth is to be, you know, engaged in collaborative dialogue with the respective cities. I do, for the remaining minute, I actually want to slightly change direction into class sizes. I do think that we need to prepare for expansion of, of, of schools, but not necessarily to only cover the expanding population, but I want to see smaller class sizes. And the reason why I want to see smaller student-parent ratios is because statistics show that when you have a lower student-teacher ratio, test scores go up and violence and disciplinary issues go down. And the only way we're going to be able to get a smaller student-teacher ratio is by having more classrooms. So that's something that I think I'd like to... So, that's something that I think I'd like to prepare for regardless of whether the cities are growing their population. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Ed?
Yeah, you're right. It is an interesting question. I wish I had a crystal ball. I've been through the economic downturn. So, with that said, we, in the past, have designed and prepared on our master's facility plan, schools and everything else, and then the economy crashes. And so, we're hearing with school sites, designs that became obsolete, and we had to redesign. So, with that said, we have to really, you know, the economy and the trends of the economy can be here and be gone the next. We just need to make sure that we make our master facility plans, we have our ear to the ground and listen to that every year, the economy. As far as cities and counties, we have also, not only county at large, in Rancho Cordova, most of the growth is going to be in the county areas, not within the city. We're going to have both, but are also going to have the South of 50 and Folsom, so we can't forget about the county of Sacramento's growth is going to be tremendous. We have, we have to look at that per each one. The building permits is the key issue. In Folsom-Cordova, right now, we have a capacity of 21,089 K3 facilities. The current enrollment is 20,469. In the next five years, we're going to have 4,350 single-family dwellings, 970 attached single-family dwellings, 818 multifamilies were constructed, totaling 6,144 households, totaling the resulting increase in enrollment. Through all the calculations, you read the master facility is about 35,000, 3600. Those are based on factors, but that can change almost overnight. What I'm saying is that we have districts, district has 21 elementary, four middles, three high, three alternate schools. We need to build more schools, and we need to have the facilities capacity. We're at capacity right now, so as we're growing, we need to watch that very closely. And we do that, because the board adopts, as a whole, the master's facility plans, and we have an excellent staff that watches that, and we can monitor those numbers really closely.
Thank you, Ed. Next question, we are going to start with Josh. Question is, what should our school district be doing to ensure the safety of students and staff?
I think this is a very fantastic question. It's a very timely question. You know, there are a number, I think, of parents in the district and across the nation that are asking this question, as we see, you know, increases in violence throughout the country, and also just, you know, issues like bullying. I think bullying is also something that is very problematic and has always been an issue. I think there's two different ways that I think, the school safety problem in particular, I think we should be attacking. And I think the first is somewhat reactionary, and the district has been trying to move in this direction of partnering more with our local law enforcement officers to provide more SRO, student resource officers on our campuses, safety resource officer, sorry, on our campuses. And I think that those, that collaboration needs to continue. However, like I said, that's very reactionary. I think the problem actually goes deeper than that, and I think the bigger challenge that we're going to have as a board is going to be, how can we ensure that we're taking care of our children's mental health? How can we ensure that we're making sure our children's emotional needs are being met? And are we promoting programs within our schools and the culture of our schools that are helping encourage kids to support one another? There's a few startling things that I've found is that, or that I've been reading about, is that California has fewer mental health professionals in their schools than any other state. We also rank last among states with about 1,000 students per student counselor. And we also are having, again, trouble funding these services. And so, one of the things that I'm really pushing for is to find creative ways to get more funding to mental health by partnering with the county to get more money from the Mental Health Services Act, which is something that the state legislature is, well, just passed a bill on that, that I'm hoping we can go after as a school board in the future.
Thank you, Joshua. Dave?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, school safety is paramount in most people's minds. You know, gosh, a year hasn't gone by in the last decade where we haven't seen horrific incidents on the nightly news, and it's just, it's just very sad. But, you know, I think a lot of people, their initial reaction is, "Oh, we need police officers." We need, you know, or they're called school resource officers on the facilities. And, you know, I personally think we need to take a more holistic approach than just simply saying that that's the cure-all. I mean, let's face it, we'll use Folsom High as an example. God forbid there was an incident at Folsom High. Most, statistics show that most shootings are done in less than three minutes. That campus is so large, even if you did have a school resource officer, they may not be able to get to the location in time before the shooting is finished. So, while that might make people feel better, that you have school resource officers, it isn't necessarily the solution by itself. And I think a more holistic approach is, yeah, school resource officers is one thing to have, but we need to be smarter on our building designs, and how we design our building and construction in the future. We need to hire more mental health counselors. I mean, right now, the mental health counselors, it's, the mental health counselor to student ratio is 600 to 1 in the district. I'm sorry, if you were responsible for 600 people, are you able to keep track? No. I mean, we need to have a greater concentration of that. And then I go back to smaller class sizes. I mean, again, the statistics show the smaller the class size, the greater testing performance, and the lower disciplinary issues. And I think if we take a more holistic approach to it, that, you know, could be the solution. That being said, there is no way to guarantee 100% that you're always going to have a safe environment, but we can do our best to make it as safe as it possibly can be.
Thanks. Thank you, Dave. Ed?
Yeah, it's really unfortunate, the last decade, we've seen a lot of events that have happened in our nation. With that said, you know, we've have, in this district, we have came up with some really good plans in the last seven, eight years, we're probably the leaders in California, especially unfortunately, in the active shooter plan. With that said, you have to have children feel, if they feel safe in the environment, how do we do that? That's the good question. Having that conducive learning environment is critical to student success. We have, we've had, had, again, if we engage, we have stakeholder meetings, we go out, and we ask each site and each community, along with all the emergency services, the police, the fire, everybody involved, teachers, to come up with a plan, in which we just recently did a recent plan update on that. I was very active in that. I wanted to make sure that the issue that Mr. Reed brought up, the response times is one of my biggest issues in the outlaying sites, where resource officers, yes, we can put more resource officers on that, but there are some school sites that wouldn't do that. And you're right, the incidences, within the first three minutes, we have to have protocols in place and barriers and systems that will protect the children and teachers and staff right away within that first minute, which has to do with site design and everything else. And that's where I think the board can get more involved in site design and make it a priority, to make sure we have these passive protective systems in place to protect our kids. On the issue of bullying, we have policies to follow it, but we also should be following the victim. We should, yes, have mental health, and we have implemented some of those in here. It has done great progress on that, again, but we can do better in providing that mental health support for kids, because the issues of incidences is directly proportional to the mental health status. And that could be from outside or inside of kids having problems, if you look at all the incidences. Again, I want to emphasize, it's not just a single silver bullet that takes, and we have to take this in a comprehensive fashion and look at it together with our community and engage everybody involved.
Thank you, Ed. Jaya?
Thank you so much. I think I may lose some voters based on my position here, but I feel very strongly, and I think you need to know. I don't believe that our teachers can be SWAT team officers. And this is by no disrespect to our teachers, who I think are amazing. You know, they're not only counselors, they're professionals and they're experts in their fields. They learn management skills and delegation skills and constant professional developments, but to be able to put on them a duty of being trained, to be able to react to active shooter incidents, I think is too much. Yes, absolutely have drills, absolutely have methods and uniformity to everyone to make sure that we do due diligence in protecting our students, barricading our doors, keeping them away from windows, which we're doing, and we need to do more of. But I do think active collaboration with not only the police departments of our city, school resource officers, but also a safety assessment team, which we have been doing, that needs to be site-specific. And let me tell you what I mean by that. I'm not sure how many of you remember the incident in Vista. I think it was in March. It so happened that that incident also, although it was a false alarm, which is good for us, but it also happened on the day of a safety committee meeting that the district had planned, right? And I think this was an opportunity for all of us to learn about what were the good things that happened and worked according to plan, and what were things that we need to improve. We may not have many such opportunities to have these dry runs, which are not really drills, but active situations, but we need to be learning from them actively and implementing them in a way where everybody knows, the substitute teachers know what to do, people that are volunteers know what to do. My daughter goes to Empire Oaks, and at any given time, depending on, you know, where you are in the lunch hour, there are rotating classes that come in for their breaks. There's always going to be people on campus. So, these plans have to be site-specific. Everyone involved in a safety position with that school, or a management or administrative position with that school, need to know what to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaya. Next question, we're actually going to start with Dave. Question is, in an era of limited, excuse me, in an era of limited financial resources, when considering budget priorities and possible reductions, what factors will you base your decisions on?
Okay. Well, let me approach it in a couple of different ways. Obviously, when it comes to prioritizing expenditures, bottom line is the students always come first. So, you need to always, from that viewpoint, is the way I would always approach it. But obviously, we have to strategically tell our priorities. And, you know, that's where I currently have some concerns with how we approach the local control funding formula and our local control accountability plans, in that, you know, we have limited discretionary, you know, funds that we can spend as we see fit. And I, you know, have seen the board, you know, very thoughtfully review them, but unfortunately, I think they try to sometimes be all things to all people. In other words, they don't want to focus on just a handful of issues and do it, you know, outstanding, but instead, maybe spread the resources so thin that they can say they're doing things, but to bring it to culmination, and, you know, I think that's one thing that I would look at. But, you know, unfortunately, you know, what we have in this state, you know, we spend roughly about $9,500 per student in this state. On the states that spend a lot of money, take a look in New York State, that spends almost $18,000 per student on education. It really does speak to the priority of the state, and, you know, I think that the school board, perhaps being the bully pulpit in the suburb of the state capitol, maybe if the school board members can agree on a particular strategy, is go down and do some lobbying, get some additional authority for some local control to do things outside the box. I mean, the bottom line is, we are strangled by the bureaucracy that the state of California places on the school district. If we can find some ways to lessen that bureaucracy, we can redirect money and make sure that issues of concern are addressed. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Ed?
Yeah, I've been into the worst time when I was on the boards, so I know what that's like, reductions, and the last thing a board member wants to do is layoffs. But, not paramount, when we were doing that, we kept the classroom as number one priority, the kids. So, and how we go about that is we get, and everybody involved, all the stakeholders, the teachers, every site, and we come up with a list. And that list has to be refined down and discussed collaboratively with the board to make really some really hard decisions. So, we have to be really thankful of how we're going to go about making those cuts, because it is a hard decision. That's not something I do, but you do, but protect the classroom the best. There are other ways, like you were talking about earlier, the advocate for the state funding, we're inadequate in funding at the state level. We have a governor going out that created the LCFF and the LCAP. You know, with that said, we have a $209 million budget, approximately 2,000 employees, we have 21,094% ADA, and 85%, around 80 or 85% is salaries and expenditure and benefits. So, when you're talking about cuts, we really have to make really sound decisions based on information, where we're going to make that happen. And I think that's very paramount, that we have to have that list and work together. The other thing out there that the state has is Prop 30. I don't know, a lot of people know it's the Local Public Safety Act, where it allocates in our district now about 24 million, and the charter schools about 170,000. That doesn't go to administration. We really need to have that funding, but if that goes away in the near future, because the voters put that in, then we're going to be in a big hurt. And so, we have to really lobby a lot to make sure that our funding sources are adequate funding to go with that. Also, the big thing about making sure we make these cuts, that we have to keep in mind a negative certification with SCOE, which is the county actually certifies our budget, prepares and accepts our budget. If we can't maintain the three-year projections in our budget, we can be completely have a hearing, they can make recommendations, and ultimately, if we can't balance the budget from the cuts, the SCOE can actually take all the authority right from the board. So, it's a big accountability issue, we have to make those hard decisions, but it really starts with the stakeholders and making sure that list meets everybody's needs, that site's specific all the way from the district level. Those are hard decisions, but that's the process we go through, and we had to make those hard decisions in the past, unfortunately.
Thank you, Ed. Jaya?
Great, thank you. You know, unfortunately, I think this is a reality that we're going into, we're going to see more and more limited financial resources come our way, but hopefully, with a managed plan, we can keep the effects of this somewhat neutral and not terribly impactful to us. I think our decisions, and the factors that we need to consider firstly, is we need to consider facts, right? We need to look at finalized numbers, we need to look at budgets, programs. Obviously, discretionary programs are the ones that always get cut first, because we cannot cut mandated programs. My goal would be to maintain or take measures where we can retain our talented staff, because that's the foundation. Why do people come to our schools, or why do we have the performance rates or indices that we have? It's because of experienced teachers and administrators and staff that work dedicatedly and passionately to keep these in place for our students, and to make sure that, you know, no child is left behind, although I hate that quote. But also, I think we do need to lean on our cities, we need to lean on our business partners and our communities. We need to be thinking about, you know, what grants can we apply for that we haven't considered before? You know, maybe the Gates Foundation is an option. Intel provides us with fantastic opportunities, but maybe we need to be creative about how we can get more from them. Or, if not only Intel, there are other organizations in here, like Kaiser, you know, locally, we have UC Davis, that's not that far away. And I think we can create opportunities to be able to offset some of these discretionary programs. But I think where we need to be careful especially is with regard to our special ed programs, because the loss of teachers and specialties over there would be even more impactful to the kids in need. So, I think these are hard decisions, but hopefully, facts will help us give the guidance that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaya. Joshua?
So, you know, there's, this is always going to continue to be an issue, and there's also a lot of future uncertainty when it comes to our budget. We have, Governor Brown is leaving, so we don't know what the future holds, we don't know who our next governor will be or what his priorities will be. And so, there's uncertainty there. There's also the uncertainty of a pending recession. Governor Brown, in his most recent budget, actually wrote in the budget that it's estimated that even a moderate recession will hit the state budget. It'll reduce the state budget by $20 billion. That's, a lot of that's going to come out of education. And while, I would love to sit here and just blame the state, like, "Oh, they're not giving us enough money." At the end of the day, we're the ones, the board is the ones that are accountable to provide that quality education, and parents are not going to accept that as an excuse. Just because the state gives us less money does not mean that we have no less responsibility as a community, as a district, to provide a quality education. And so, I think these are challenges that we are going to face, we know that for a fact. And I think the best way to tackle these challenges are, first and foremost, to make sure that we're spending money on evidence-based and results-oriented programs. There's a lot of programs out there that are very well-intended, but if I am elected to the school board, I'm going to be a big proponent of regular program evaluation to make sure that while we are spending this money on this program that is very well-intended, is it getting the results that we set out to achieve? And if it's not, we have to be willing to say, "We need to stop this program." Even though it's well-intended, we can't keep pouring money into something that's not working. And so, that is something that I'll be a big advocate for. And finally, also, building reserves. We have to, as a district, build reserves. We have to, as a district, build reserves in the good years, so that when the storm comes, we're ready for it, so that we don't have to do furloughs, so that we don't have to lay off teachers. That is the last thing that we want to do. And so for our students, that is what I will fight for.
Thank you, Joshua. So our next question is a, we've got a special question for Ed, because he's an incumbent. And then the next question will be for the rest of the three of you. So Ed, reflecting upon your 16 years of service to our district, what impact have you made to the district, and what is your proudest accomplishment?
Well, that's a really good question. What I think I've brought to the table is, over the years, my impeccable record of service, I continue serving the district. I've been the president twice here, and that does a lot of work. I know a lot of people don't realize, being the president, you have to go to a lot of meetings. I was a member for 16 years. I've been on the delegate assembly, which is a policy that we work along with the state and the large, all the other elector officials through the region. We have a region, nine, we get involved. And we work together on policy and lobbying at the state level, because a lot of the policy starts at the state level and comes down. We're handed to the education code, and so we lobby a lot and we do a lot. So I think participating in the CSBA delegate assembly was a huge thing that does help with our overall policymaking for California, but not only our district. The other things I've brought is, I've been involved in a lot of bond measures. I've brought a lot of the monies ready to be shovel-ready for the facilities on 50. We've done some bond measures. We've campaigned for those, have been involved in those quite a bit. So a lot of the facilities that you see, this building, other buildings throughout the district, were bought because of the success rate of passing bonds. So board members get involved a lot in bond measures and making sure the election goes well. Also, I want to make sure that the things that I did get involved in was the economic downturn. When I was going through the economic downturn, as we just discussed earlier, those were really tough times. And those times, I'm really proud of this district, because everybody pulled together, and we helped make those hard decisions, which were very difficult decisions, that when you're seeing people's lives impacted, when you're laying off people and cutting those cuts, I think the big contribution I did there was having the leadership and strength to go through that and do the best we can with what we got to where we're at to spring ourselves back. Those are the hard things that I don't think a lot of board members will experience. I hope we don't have to experience that again, but those are the contributions I've had. I've also been on all the board committees that you can think of. I've been on the vice president, I've been the clerk of the board, all the audit committees. I can go on on every committee you can think of. I participated in it and contributed in every aspect and gone out to a lot of the community events and everything else. So those are the kind of things I've added to when I was here. There's a lot more I can mention, but I'm running out of time, sorry.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Thank you for respecting our two-minute rule.
Right.
So for the rest of you, this question is directed to you. In your first term, what will matter the most to you? And what would you like to accomplish? Jaya?
Great, thank you. While talking to people and getting their input on this role, somebody said to me, and it stuck to me, is that if you cannot accomplish at least one thing on your priority list in four years, maybe you shouldn't run again. And I do believe that that's something to consider to all board members, whoever's elected and coming on, because you have to have a plan to implement your priority and gain consensus among your members, right? But in terms of my priority, I've talked to you about social-emotional learning. I think the district has, you know, done some fantastic things and also hired Dr. Shauna Quick Harvey, who is the director of this program. But I do believe, especially for the pre-K and elementary programs, that we can incorporate some of these tools that are significant and have such a long-term effect in terms of our children's character development. I promise you, this is not, you know, me preaching and wanting to change the value system that you as parents bring to our community, but it is to add the elements in our ever-changing society about how you cope where technology has taken over such a big part, how you cope in groups, how you function in groups, how you learn from each other. And I think this understanding, this empathy that children develop from these exercises has a tremendous effect on not only their development and leads to, you know, more coordinated and better-functioning adults, but also reduces the problems that we see in school from bullying, from isolation, and some of the more, you know, suspensions and other rates that we've discussed. So my big priority is this aspect, and I'm hoping that I'm able to, if elected, make strides in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaya. Joshua?
So I think, you know, I've already mentioned, one of my first priorities will be to get those school board meetings online, but I think that's obviously a very, a very small accomplishment in the long-term view of our district. And obviously, you're not going to solve every problem in your first term, but I think my goal, if elected in my first term to the school board, is number one, going to be build expertise. I think I've told people this, is that I really want to get a very, very thorough understanding of the budget and just become as knowledgeable about every single issue that the district is facing as I can. I am not up here claiming to be, you know, the expert on every issue. That's not what I am, but I will commit to just committing my time to learning and understanding the budget and the policies that we have in the district, so that I can develop a better understanding of what we need to fix. So that'll be, I think, my first term, that'll be probably my biggest focus. And the other part of that is going to be, I've mentioned before that I'm the parent of a special needs child, and I really want to work on creating a culture of inclusion in our district. I think that we have some great site administrators, they're doing some fantastic work, but I want to look at that and really focus on that. I think that whether it be bullying, or, you know, cyberbullying, or, you know, it's heartbreaking to me when my son comes home, he's a fourth grader, and he tells me that he's getting mistreated because he's different, and, you know, asks me why God gave him autism, you know? And so these are the things I really want to focus on, and I want to do that by working with the district, who is facilitating these great collaborative conversations with the community, and also foster community relationships with groups like A Touch of Understanding, who are teaching kids at the elementary level early on, how to put yourself in the shoes of someone with a disability, and Folsom's Hope, who's actually mentoring kids at a young age, and continue to foster those relationships.
Thank you, Joshua. Dave?
Well, the first several months, if I'm elected, I actually want to be more, spend more time observing and learning. You know, clearly, I think anybody who comes onto a school board, there's a lot to learn, even if you have an education policy background, and I think it's important that you become more knowledgeable before you dive headfirst and start trying to do something. So I think, you know, education is one thing, but I would say within the first year, there are several things that I would like to see accomplished. And, you know, I guess point number one is, we're all just one of five. So for any idea, if any of us have an idea that we want to try to advocate for, we have to try to get at least two of our colleagues to go along with us. So, you know, and hopefully all of them, if it's a good enough idea. But I'd like to, you know, focus on transparency, and there's an approach that I, in addition to the videoing of the live streaming of the board meetings, I'd like to create four advisory councils. So these are four board advisory councils. I'd like to create a parent advisory council. I'd like to create a professionals advisory council. Again, that's my term for teachers. I'd like to create a trade advisory council, where we invite leaders in the Sacramento region from the various trades to serve on an advisory council to the school board. And then finally, I'd like to create a business advisory council. I mean, again, we have Fortune 500 companies, and we're blessed with a number of them in this area. And wouldn't it be amazing if we could have the president of VSP and the site, the person who runs Intel, as well as others from Fortune 500 companies and local businesses participate on a business advisory council to advise the board? And I think if we could leverage those, create those types of councils, I think it will enhance the board and their perspective and create new opportunities and new ideas for the board to pursue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. We are down to the last two questions. So our second-to-last question, Jaya, we're going to start with you. In your opinion, what measures should our district be taking to help negate the impact of high enrollment numbers at some of our schools? For reference, Vista del Lago is over ideal capacity, and the Folsom Middle Schools each have enrollment of over 1,400 students. A high school south of Highway 50 is still five to six years out.
Wow, that's a loaded question. We would love to see reduced class sizes, right? So if there's an option where, and our budget permits, where we're able to create programs in collaboration with Los Rios. So for instance, perhaps at Vista, some of those students seeking college credit courses could go over there. Or we create a streamlined curriculum where they're able to offer some of those same courses, perhaps with schedules that work for these students, so they're able to attend both. Probably going to be a scheduling nightmare for some parents, but if we have to be creative about reducing class sizes, you have to think outside the box. And I think with the resources that we have, we need to be actively looking at collaborating with these universities and community colleges to see how we can support these students. And now, this may apply to some of those, you know, students that want the college-level courses at Vista, but there are concerns, you know, at Cordova High and also at the middle schools about class sizes. And without the opportunity to have new buildings that support them, how can we use sites where they may not have, or they may have space, but may not have a program in place that would benefit these students? Can we use transportation, although that may be out of the question with increasing transportation budgets that have not been accounted for or coming out of general fund? But we do need to maybe work with the cities and work with transportation plans that they provide for upper-level students, perhaps, where we're not worried about little kids getting on, you know, city buses and not knowing where they're going. And that could be another option, perhaps, to be creative. But I do think, you know, we need to all put our heads together, all the stakeholders, and think about how we can effectuate this goal, because it is important in middle schools and high schools to get smaller class sizes and for children to get the attention they need to function effectively. Thanks.
Thank you, Jaya. Joshua?
Yeah, this is going to be a major challenge, and I don't even know if, you know, I could say I have the answer. I think it's something that's going to require a lot of collaboration. My kids attend an elementary school with over 700 kids. It's probably, if not the most, one of the most impacted schools in the district, and it's a challenge. Now, I think at the end of the day, in the short term, the best way to do it is to provide support to the principal at those schools, to the teachers at those schools. There's no magic bullet, but I definitely think that it's, we have to provide as much support as we can from the district level to those site administrators. And so I don't know what the full solution is, but I do think, you know, Jay is right, that we need to get stakeholders together at the district level, stakeholders together at the community level, and figure those out, and rely on the expertise that we have. I mean, these are not new challenges. These are challenges that our district has faced before. I would hate to see, you know, a bunch of new portables go up, but in the short term, that may be what needs to happen. But I do know that this district has a history of successfully dealing with those challenges, and I think that we can definitely make it work.
Thank you, Joshua. Dave?
Yeah, I mean, the middle school and high schools, at least in Folsom, really are stressed to capacity, and it is a serious concern. Part of me feels that they should have never been allowed to get that large to begin with, and perhaps other school sites should have been considered at an earlier time. But, you know, I think, you know, if we could focus on seeing if we can accelerate the building of the middle school and the high school south of 50, I know that there is a timeframe for it. You know, even if we were able to accelerate that by a year or two, I think it would be a welcome relief for both Vista and Folsom High School, as well as Sutter and Folsom Middle. You know, we do have the possibility of looking at bonds for their initiative, a bond approved, to perhaps get some accelerated funding for those purposes. You know, I think we need to be smarter on how we construct our schools, too. You know, I think that the day and age of building a single-story construction in our schools should be over, not only for environmental purposes, we should always be looking at a minimum of two-story construction to reduce the footprint that we're building, as well as allow for additional expansion. I mean, if you keep on building one-story buildings on these campuses, you're going to run out of space, and that's what we're seeing at Vista, for example. And then finally, you know, I like to kind of think outside the box, and I don't know exactly what that means, but I would like to explore the possibility of creating small academies. So small high school academies, where you would have a maximum population of maybe 400 students or 500 students that are focused on specifics skills, like a performing arts academy, or a sciences academy, or something like that, that we could get them into smaller facilities that maybe doesn't have a focus on athletics, but it's more focused on a specific subject matter. So, thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Ed?
Yeah, I mean, this is a challenge that we've experienced in the past, when we've seen a lot of growth in some of our schools. One of the one areas that is most contentious, of course, is boundary adjustment process, which does involve the public and everybody involved, but nobody really likes adjusting boundaries, because, you know, your neighborhood sites, kids are across the street going to a different school. But we also need to look at those, because we've had those adjustments before, and we have a lot of board meetings to talk about that in a comprehensive way. I mean, there's other things we could do temporarily, like modulators, which if we even have the capacity to do that there, that has been used for a while in the past to do that, to relieve some of the classrooms and classrooms areas, maybe looking at reprogramming some of our program site schedules. Sometimes that can help. You know, the busing part, that's a, you know, that's a last resort or anything like that. And also maybe even thinking about relooking at, of course, the bond measures we did have for revitalization from these sites. But there are opportunities to maybe look at, maybe the remodeling these sites to comprehension, but that does take quite a bit of money and time, and it does displace folks, and we have to think strategically how to put some kids in one area, and we have talked about that. So there's, yeah, it is not a simple solution to this, but we would have to really look at all our possibilities and try to maintain the neighborhood sites for those kids that grew up and maintain those kids that have been going together with all the other kids. So either way, accelerating the other avenues of billing, we would have to look at our master facility plan and look at that, but it's really, it's really based on permitting and rooftops. But I think we just need to look at it comprehensively and see how we do it through those hearing processes.
Thank you, Ed. Final question, save the best for last.
Okay.
What are the factors on which you will base your decisions as a school board member? For example, if an agenda item recommended that the board increase graduation, how would you prepare to deliberate this item, and what are the factors on which you will base your decision? We're going to start, sorry, we're starting with Josh.
All right. So I think, you know, and I've said it already today, but at the end of the day, all my decisions will be based on what is best for the students and the families and the parents. That is kind of what I have built my campaign around, and I think that it's very important to listen to the needs of the community. We, I'll kind of go back to this, because I really think that it's important. We have gotten to a point in, you know, society, I guess, where we are not able to have a conversation. And I think that when challenges arise, or when deliberation arises, that it's going to be crucial for all five of the board members, whether it's me or anyone, up on this dais to really commit to working with one another, despite their disagreements and differences. And so that will be, you know, I would love to create a culture of collaboration and a culture of just working together amongst ourselves with my fellow board members, because I think that that is the way to get things done. It's been proven over and over again that the most successful school districts and, you know, across the nation are
and, you know, across the nation are, have school boards that work collaboratively with one another. And so that is definitely going to be probably one of my number-one goals, and I also, at the end of the day, it's going to be parents and students always are going to come first in my decision-making, and what's going to be best for them.
Thank you, Joshua. Dave?
Yeah, well, for, I guess, to start with, again, I'll go back to focus on the students. I mean, that's the purpose of public education. When it gets down right to it, it's about the students, and we need to always do all of our decisions under that guise. And sometimes they're not going to be easy decisions, right? I mean, people are going to be upset and, from time to time, on, on issues, but if we keep the core focus on the students, you can't go wrong. I also, I guess, decision-making process, I, I'm a big fan of, of statistics and facts, so, you know, if I can get some statistic base, basis for decisions, you know, that's obviously what I'd like to get, and make decisions based on what, you know, other, other school districts, other approaches have worked. I mean, we're only one school district in the entire nation. We can learn from each other, and, you know, obviously, you know, I, I think we can do some, some creative thinking on, on the board. I'd also like to bring in experts. You know, frequently, we hear from the staff, but, you know, there's, there's no reason why we can't bring in college professors or business leaders to have them present to the board solutions. And I'd like to think a little bit outside the box in, in approaching that during the delivery process. I agree with Josh about collaboration. Collaboration of the board members is, is essential, and I feel confident that I could get along with all the existing board members that will be continuing on, as well as anybody up here on this dais that I feel that I can have a good working relationship with. And then finally, you know, things that will increase our scores, and what I mean by that is, right now, the U.S. News &amp; World Report lists Vista del Lago as the 1,324th best high school in the country, and Folsom High is the 1,374th high school in the country. We can do better, and I want to find ways to do better. I know that's just one way to look at it, but I'd like to see us do better on the test scores. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Ed?
Yeah, the decision processes, yes, we need to work collectively as a board member, work for consensus towards, but the decision-making process is always, you want to make alignment, not only farmost, is the LCAP, our goals. We are very committed, committed to our priorities, and the stakeholders made those decisions. So every decision we make, we need to be in alignment with already set goals that the community and everybody's already put down, so that way, we move step forward towards those goals. Of course, we also have to take, in effect, a lot of the complexities of financial impact, so every decision we make, we have to make fiscal responsible decisions of the impact of the budget. But again, data-driven, data-driven decision-making is high paramount for me, fact-finding, looking at best practices around everywhere. We can have experts, we have, we can consult CSBA. We also have consultants on complex issues that come in for different kind of issues. And of course, also be innovative and out-of-the-box thinker, don't always try to think of that. But again, we also have board policies and procedure and rules that we also make decisions that we follow, too. We don't want to get outside our own policies. And if there are some decisions that we need to update policies, then we need to look at those policies and update the policies to be more modern and up-to-date. So that, as a decision-making process, is a comprehensive approach to begin alignment with our total already goals and visions and mission statements. That's it.
Thank you, Ed. Jaya?
Thank you. Well, thankfully, this is the last question, because you're all going to be tired of my mnemonic, the AAT, Action Accountability Transparency. I think accountability is key. As my other candidates, fellow candidates here have talked about, you know, accountability and collaboration, I think it is crucial to make decisions that are grounded in facts, as Josh and Dave had talked about, but also to look at the impact that it has. So for instance, a quick example for you, the LCAP that we've talked about, the Local Control Accountability Plan, which requires that the district adopt some goals that we're going to work towards. The 2017 results for that showed that our special education student population didn't perform as expected and actually fell behind in terms of achievement with regard to the other student population. And also, our English language learner population also fell behind. So I think these, to us, are stark examples of how facts can help guide decisions and strategies and policies going forward, and also looking at the impact. I mean, obviously, if we have facts that state that these categories of students are not doing as well, that should help guide certain decisions or policies or outcomes in a way that favors integrating the reasons why, understanding it, and perhaps applying strategies that will help, you know, get more effective results in those areas. So the takeaway from it is, it always has to be fact-based, but you also have to consider the impact on our student population and our community at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaya. That concludes the questioning. We're going to end with a two-minute closing statement, and we're going to start with Dave.
Okay. I guess I'll just start by saying, let's continue the dialogue. You know, I, I can't guarantee you that we will always see eye to eye, but what I can guarantee you is that you will always have my ear, no matter what, and I tend to withhold decisions on, on how I'm going to make a final judgment until I get all the facts. So, you know, I will definitely listen to all sides and concerns before making any type of decision if I'm elected to the school board. And I guess I would just like to quickly mention, you know, you kind of are the company that you keep, so I just want to briefly mention the endorsements that I have. I'm very proud to say that I'm endorsed by school board members Sarah Kino, Chris Clark, and Zach Ford, by Rancho Cordova City Councilmember David Sander, by Folsom Mayor Steve Meculos, by Folsom Councilmembers Roger Gaylord and Andy Marin, as well as by the Folsom Chamber of Commerce and the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce, and not to forget the Folsom-Cordova Education Association. I asked for your vote on Election Day, and, but probably most importantly is, is just vote. If I'm not your, your preferred candidate, that's okay. There are a lot of good people up here, but what's most important is that, that everybody gets out and vote. So just end there, and thank you all for this opportunity to speak tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Ed?
In summary, here's one of the reasons why you should vote for me. What a candidate brings to the table of public service is extremely important, and I believe my qualifications, experience, and impeccable record of service qualifies me to continue serving our kids and you, and you as an effective board member. As I mentioned before, I served on and currently serving on members of these committees and boards, like I've been the board president twice, I've been on the board 16 years of experience dealing with all the different problems. I've served on the Cordova Community revitalization project committee, Friends of Mayfair Regional Park, Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce Board, Board of Directors, I've been the honorary vice mayor of the Rancho Cordova Community Council, I've served on the Measure B Oversight Bond Committee, CSBA to get for assemblies, and all of all the variety of different committees, so I bring a wealth of experience. Then I might add, which is probably the most important thing, significant of all, I do not have a personal educational or political bone to pick. I bring no baggage to the table of public service, only my sincere desire to serve the best educational interest of our children and thereby secure the future of all, equal opportunity and social economic to all kids. Finally, I would like to say that the community services has been very important to me, and to me, and I look forward to continue serving you as a member of the Folsom-Cordova Unified School Board, and help me once again put the education of our children first and ensure every tax dollar is spent wisely. And please, thank you for considering me in November for Ed Short for School Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Jaya?
In closing, I'm going to go back to my opening. You know, why am I running for school board? My experience at WAVE and working with community organizations has shown that we need, or students need somebody to help with not only their academic success, but also their social and emotional success. You know, my priority, and I've talked about that at length, is to bring that to you, not just because of my experiences in the community, but what I want you to also know is that the California Healthy Kids Survey, the last couple of years that was, that was listed online, the 2015, 2016 year, this statistic is really amazing, and I hope, I hope I'm analyzing it correctly, but I, but I do urge you to go online and look it up if you're in doubt. So the question was, at my school, there's a teacher or some other adult who really cares about me, right? And the numbers for seventh graders, 30%, ninth graders, 20%, eleventh graders, 27%. That, to me, is a statistic that we can change effectively and with a strategic approach, and, and to me, that I think is a fundamental index of our students' well-being. If they don't feel that a single person in their school really cares about them, and this category that I reported was the very much true category, you know, I think that does say something to us, as a district. The district itself has been phenomenal, but I do think we have room to grow. While I would love your support, and, you know, if there's anything more that you need from me, you can go online and look at jibforfcusd.com. You do have wonderfully qualified candidates here, and while I still have time, I'd like to thank this wonderful timekeeper over here who's been so diligent and phenomenal. Thank you to the Folsom-Cordova Educational Foundation, the Folsom Telegraph, the Rancho Cordova Grapevine Soundboard, and of course, Adam here with Folsom TV. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jaya. Joshua?
Well, thank you to all the sponsors and Folsom TV for, for putting this on. I think it's really important that we do have this public dialogue, and I was very excited to participate. I also want to be very accessible. As a board member, that, that's going to be a goal of mine. You can always reach me on any of my social media, or my website, or my email, I will be very responsive. You know, when my, when my wife and I were deciding where to settle down when we started having a family, it wasn't really a difficult decision. We came back to this community because, like all parents, we wanted our kids to have a world-class education. I think that's what everyone wants for their kids. And in my professional career, you know, I've begun to realize how lucky we are to be in this community, because there are so many areas in California where getting that high-quality education is very, very difficult, because kids are in neighborhood schools that are not serving their needs. And in fact, our state ranks near the bottom across the board in educational metrics statewide, but we're very lucky to live in this community, where we do have some very high-performing schools. Our, our families in our state and community, there are a lot of families that are also facing a lot of serious challenges on a day-to-day, day-to-day basis, including poverty, lack of access to health care, rising crime rates, housing affordability. And we, there's a lot of different opinions out there on how to solve those big challenges, how to solve those, those things, but there's a point of consensus, in particular, that can have a positive impact on all of those policy areas, and that's education. I think we can all agree that that is the foundation for success, and it's a key to greater economic opportunity, positive health outcomes, personal safety, and housing stability. That is why I'm passionate about the continued success and improvement of our school district, and that's why I'm running for school board. I want to ensure that every child in our community is given the opportunity and the foundation to thrive. And so I really appreciate you all for having us out tonight, and I humbly ask for your vote in, in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. In closing, I'd just like to say thank you to all the candidates for taking the time. You're passionate, knowledgeable, you're involved. I think Folsom-Cordova Unified School District is privileged to have all four of you guys running, so thank you for taking the time. And also, I want to thank everyone here for taking the time to come out and be part of this process, and of course, those of you that, that are tuning in at home, I'd like to thank you as well for tuning in and being part of this process. Please feel free to comment down below, ask questions to any specific candidates that you'd like. I'm sure they'll be more than happy to respond. Once again, thank you for tuning in, and everyone coming out tonight. Have a good night.